I didn't want to cough on all the down and then he told us. I was shocked whenever you were out there.
All right. We're going to reconvene. Okay, court will come back to orders. We're at the visitor input stage of the special meeting today. And we ask that if you want to talk about something that has an agenda item, wait till that agenda item is called. If it's not on the agenda and it's public input from you, then you're welcome to go to the podium. Is there any public input other than on agenda items? This is Alicia Napper.
Better known as Callie's mom.
Yes, my daughter works miracles. My concern is the fact that is there any kind of grieving process or counseling put together for these individuals, these first responders, the dispatchers, everybody like that who is having to do this day in and day out? Is there any kind of counseling put together for them to make sure that they're going to be okay?
Can we hear the question, but this is input only? We don't get a chance to give you the output back, but that's all we can really say at this point. Any other public input? Very well, then let's move on to the consideration agenda. Item 1.1 is to consider discussing appropriate action following an update on the status of recovery efforts from the July 4 flooding. Charlie, you want to start with this?
Yes, sir, I do.
This is Charlie Hastings, our county engineer, who has been, I'm telling you, sprinting across the Hill Country Youth Defense Center, back and forth every day and up and down the highways. Charlie.
Today's day eighteen. I'm Charlie Hastings, I'm a county engineer, I'm a licensed professional engineer, I'm a certified floodplain manager, and if I'm fumbling over my words, I have a really broken heart. My wife woke me up at 7:00 AM on July 4th and she said, "Do you know what's going on?" "No." So I left, started making phone calls to different staff members. "Are you okay? Why? What's going on?" Something bad. There is no signs that there has been any kind of a flood coming down Highway 783. I called the Public Works Director for Kerrville. "Stuart, are you okay?" "Yeah, yeah, I'm heading in. I got a call too." He works for the city, we're counterparts. He says, "Charlie, I'm not seeing anything on Highway 16 that shows there was anything happened at all. There's nothing in the ditches. What's this all about?" I said, "I don't know. I heard there's bad flooding on the river and that it came through Hunt and Stuart, what I've heard sounds really bad." So I make my way into town, I get to Guadalupe Street. I'm county engineer. "I'm going." Well, I got met with police, they turned me back. Well, I know better. Turn around, don't drown. Because if you live in the hill country and it rains, the way you survive is you stay home. You stay put. We all know that. The only people that die is the people that leave. If you get in a car, you're dead. Turn around, don't drown. That's the motto for the Texas Floodplain Managers Association. Okay? So I head following the river down Highway 27 and I get down to F Street, which comes right before G Street, in case you don't know that. And there's a man sitting out there and there is mud and silt everywhere and he is destitute. He, his car is moved, there's silt. I'm wondering, I got to put it in four-wheel drive just to get over there to ask how he's doing. And I said, "How high did it get in here?" And he showed me how high it got in his place. And he had family coming right then from Jerking Springs to come help him. I said, "You know, I think we can fix your car right now." I said, "You tried to start it, didn't you?" I said, "He said, 'Yeah.'" I said, "It's hydrolocked. You got tools? Let's pull the spark plugs, crank on it, you'll get all the water out of it, it'll get you going." We didn't really have the tools and I knew people were coming to help him, so we moved on. So we immediately go to the Roden Bridge office. I've got the Roden Bridge Administrator coming, I've got my assistant. By the way, the County Engineers Department, we've been around only for a precious few years. We were formed in 2016 and I was allowed to hire an assistant, Bobby Gore. And he's unbelievable. We don't sleep unless the Lord allows us to. And we wake us up, we get to work. I've had one cup of coffee in three weeks. One. And it's because I went to church on Sunday and I thought I was going to hit my head on the guy in front of me. And it allowed me, when I got that cup of coffee, to talk to some people in the foyer that I needed to talk to. And that's it. We've been running on a drum. I talked with FEMA, I showed them everything we've done and I can't get into the details, y'all. And the man that I talked to had worked 9/11 and every event since. He was in Hawaii. He's been to all of them. I showed him what we did and he said, "You, how did you do this?" "We have a hydraulic model and you're going to see on the agenda later, we had to hire this guy under emergency circumstances and he was placed in our hands by the hand of God." Okay? Everybody wants to blame this on somebody? I'm telling you, there's no escaping this one. And people are going to want to talk to engineers like me and say, "Tell us what happened. Tell us what happened." Yeah, we can tell you what happened, but we couldn't have predicted this. If you want a prediction, the answer lies with the greatest servant leaders we have in this country, which are farmers and ranchers. You go and talk to them. They are the experts. They will tell you. They know the history. We have a man in this county that's been here since 1857, his family. His great-grandfather was a Texas Ranger. And he knows this river better than anybody. So you know we put him in a chopper so that he could see what's going on and tell us, "What do you see?" And he's not the only one. We've got others here that are the same. And they'll tell you what that river will do because they know. And they've told me, nobody alive has seen this one, Charlie. Not this one. Ninety percent of the water on the Guadalupe River fell in the drainage basin, the drainage basin of the South Fork. The flow at 12:00 AM at the Hunt gauge, and you can look it up yourself, was approximately 53 gallons per second. You could jump across it. It rained for three hours straight in that basin and we've seen some data from the National Weather Service and I've seen the images where it looks like a giant hurricane just sat, no wind, it stayed in one spot and it put all of its might into that one drainage basin. It picked up a little bit of the North Fork Drainage Basin, a little bit of Johnson Creek. The rest of us didn't know anything was really going on, quite frankly. If you got up that morning, it's because you heard something on the news and what you were hearing was not good and it just got worse. A nightmare. I would like for somebody, I haven't had a chance to do this, but I thought about this last night. Can somebody please show us a graphic of just the South Fork of the Guadalupe River and show us how many acres that is and how big it is and recognize that it is 100% limestone with shallow, friable, rocky soil? Everybody in the room here knows and understands, when you've got soil that when you go out there with a spade to try to dig and you go down about an inch and a half and it says, "You're not going any further," you know what we're talking about. It's rock. It might as well be completely paved with concrete. And we know what a city like New York, I would like to see the image. I would like for somebody to show it, because I just don't have time, guys. Somebody needs to take the image of that entire drainage basin and they need to figure out how steep it is, because it is very steep the whole way. It is a giant funnel. And I'm sorry, but if you get rain for 15 minutes straight, it's going to do something ugly. Ninety percent approximately of all the rain we got was out of the South Fork. And it went from midnight, 50 gallons per second, to 3:00 AM, 264 gallons per second, no big deal still. Thirty minutes later is 125,000 gallons per second. Folks, that's a 10-foot rise that every one of us has seen. No big deal. You could go down and look at it. I had a friend that did that. He went down on his quad at 4:00 AM in the Hunt area, between Hunt and Ingram, and he said, "Charlie, I've seen it a million times. If he would have stayed there just a few more moments, he would have been swept away." He made it back. At 4:06, he put his head down. At 4:30, his mother called because she lives in a cabin on property and said, "There are people with flashlights in the field and the field is full of water." "Mom, you're crazy." Opened the door, the water was 40 foot from his house. Way, 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 way above the 100-year, way above the 500-year. Because I have those. Unfortunately, the studies we have don't show the 1,000-year. It's off the charts. Okay? But we're going to fix that.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
We understand.
One more thing to paint the picture, because this is critical. 10-foot, right? We're at 125,000 gallons per second. Thirty minutes later, it was, the gauge said it was 900,000 gallons per second, but we have reason to believe that there was some damage to the gauge and it just didn't really know what it was. And from our preliminary emergency purposes-only modeling, we're getting 950,000 gallons per second and our model is showing heights of 40 feet and we already know from talking to people, 55 feet on some parts of the river. You can't lift you that. It was a tsunami. It was an inland tsunami and it ripped everything up. I talked with Texas A&amp;F Forest Service, they said they did Hurricane Harvey. They said, "No." They said, "We've never seen anything like this. These trees turned to splinters. We've never seen anything like this." Our debris managed people have told us, they said, "This is bigger than Rockport Hurricane Harvey. You have more debris." Okay, so let me tell you what our engineering department's been doing. I wanted to show this right quick. I'm a former president of the Texas Association of County Engineers and Road Administrators. I've also presented several times at TFMA conferences, floodplain management conferences, and that community was calling me that morning. "What can we do? How can we help? Engineers, contractors, the whole works." So I apologize if you're in the media and you're at the New York Times or you're with the Houston Chronicle or the Washington Post and I have completely ignored you, but we're trying to find our people. And I'm trying to, it's like we're trying to cook for 100,000 people in our living room and if people keep coming in and asking me, "Hey, is it ready? Is it ready? What's the status? What's the status?" I will never get the meal done. Okay? So give your state police, the Texas Rangers, they've been heading up to search and rescue. If you're mad that you didn't know and they didn't give you updates along the way, it's because they were doing their job so diligently that they were able to a few days ago say, "We only got three left." That's real. Okay. County engineer services have been desperately needed day and night during this presidentially declared disaster to provide engineering design analysis and both strategic and logistical support for the Texas Department of Emergency Management, Texas Engineering Extension Task Force One, Texas A&amp;F Forestry Service, Army National Guard, Army Corps of Engineers, TCEQ, FEMA DPS Troopers, Kerrville Fire Department, Kerr County Sheriff Department, Kerr County Roden Bridge Department, City of Kerrville Public Works Department and dozens of other entities that have come. I can't list them all. It's an alphabet soup of acronyms. It's crazy. These are the things that we have done for you and we are light-years ahead, okay? And so tomorrow night, we're going to have a meeting to help the people now, because they're trying to rebuild their houses now. If you've been displaced, accept all that help, okay? We're going to help you out. We're going to get through this together. By the way, the word of the day today that we all need to remember, and I've not been hearing a lot of this from the media and they need to correct this. Pleasant words are a honeycomb, sweet to the soul and healing to the bone. Our community and the people that are helping us, we all need to heal. And I know they couldn't ask your question about are people getting mental health help? They are. My staff went from a staff of me and Bobby and everyone calls us Charlie Bobby, Charlie Bobby, co-call Charlie Bobby, two people to 1,002 people on the first day and a few days later it swelled to 2,602 people. We have professionals here. And on top of that, at least 20,000 volunteers. My time at Texas A&amp;M prepared me for this. I was in the Corps of Cadets. I built Aggie Bonfire. And I'm telling you, those two things alone and the most important, my relationship with Jesus Christ, we're getting it done, people. He's appointed us all, every one of us has a specific task. We have talented reporters. They're not leading, they're not following and they won't step down. And I asked them to lead, to follow or step down. Choose one of them. Don't be a part of the problem. Quit spreading the poison. Let us heal. We can never heal if you keep picking the scab open.
Charlie, I'm sorry, I need you to just give us an update.
The update is that we have established high-water marks. The Harris County Flood District through STAR request has completed that. We've generated a high-water mark map, the Harris County Flood District through a STAR request. STAR stands for State of Texas Assistance Request. It's complete. We modeled the July 4th, 2025 storm event for the entire Guadalupe River from the headwaters of Canyon Lake all the way, from the headwaters all the way to Canyon Lake. It's 100 miles, there's 900-foot elevation difference. It's complete. That data was instrumental. We shared and collaborated with the state police and Texas Rangers and they totally revised their search efforts. That's why there's only three left and we're going to find them all. Determining the exact flood level event, is it 100-year? No, it's way bigger. Is it a 500? Is it 1,000? It's bigger than a 500. Let's leave it at that, but that is pending because it needs to be verified. We're going to verify it. We're in the process of doing that. Obtaining new aerial photography to capture the damage, that was complete. Your Kerr 9-1 folks got on the horn right away and they secured digital imagery to be taken in phone. Securing a change finder program, which is something that the appraisal district uses to see if you put a swimming pool in your backyard. That is underway. That analysis is forthcoming. That's going to help us to determine what structures they're gone. They moved. Something's different. Okay? Substantial damage estimates for approximately 2,000 structures that were affected by this, it's pending and it's underway. It's pending, and it's underway. It's a little bit of both. But we're gonna put together a strategic systematic approach to get this done. But we need people at home to tap the brakes. Okay? Creating a new floodplain development permit, because right now, the one that we have is four pages long, and you fill it out by paper, and you walk it to my office and shake my hand, and we go from there. That's not gonna work if I've got two thousand. So that is something that I need help with. I don't quite have a solution yet. I need a floodplain development permit application that's available both online and as a mobile app that people can start the process, they can select an engineer or design professional, and move forward. That's all I've got. We've been busy. If I ignored you, forgive me. We're trying to find our babies.
Thank you, Charlie.
Question real quick, Charlie, model.
Yes, sir.
When did we get to see it? Mike's model.
Mike's model, we tomorrow night at our presentation, we will have a paper copy of it that is not all the way to Canyon Lake, because it took thirty people to put it together and hang it on the wall. We're just gonna go to Comfort. And let me assure everyone, I've been in a chopper, and this is what I saw. Went all the way to the headwaters, and I saw nothing, but you might as well have just been a big concrete flip and slide. Okay? All the way down, and the damage is devastating. But as that river went down, people are wondering, well, the North Fork got it bad. A portion of the North Fork got it bad. Why? This river was so swollen that every nook and cranny and creek on the sides that virtually had no water in it got inundated, some of them for up to a mile. So our North Fork and our people in Bumblebee, they got it bad because that water couldn't get into the river. And that's why our Hunt store has had record-setting heights. Again, our experts, they're, if there's a farmer or rancher in this room, he's the expert. That's who the media needs to be talking to. Okay? They're the, the greatest servant leaders we have on the planet. Talk to them, they have the history. They know what great, 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 great grandpa said has happened. And it'll scare you when you hear the stories of cypress trees on top of mountains in Medina. They're out there, and the Indians didn't drag them up there. Because the settlers asked them, and they said, no, the water did that. Okay? And so that's a story right there that somebody needs to follow up on. I'm trying to, but I don't have time.
So Tuesday night, they're gonna?
So Tuesday night, it's only gonna be from, basically from Mystic or that area, Mary Mead area to Comfort. And the chopper ride revealed that basically what happened was this river relieved itself as it ripped through our community, and every creek took a portion, took a portion, so it spread out, and then it finally, as it went around Milldam Road, which is just on the other side of the Kerr County line, it deposited a bunch of debris there. As it went through Comfort, only four homes got some damage that I know of, four. And once it goes under I-ten, it doesn't look like there was a flood. You see some grass laid over, and there's a difference. Something changes when you go under I-ten or in Comfort. There was grass everywhere, grass-lined river, not rock and gravel like what we have. Okay? And we followed it all the way to Guadalupe State Park, okay, which is near Burdheim. It was beautiful the whole way. I couldn't tell that anything had happened. It's because the creeks took the load and it allowed it to slow it down. Okay? That's your update. Are there any more questions?
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Good job.
God bless you.
We're gonna get through this.
Let me say that I've learned a lot about emergency management in the last, is it eighteen days now? And one of the things I've learned is that it's a process. And you have to complete one process before you can get to the next process, and the next process, and the next process. And we had a tremendous support group show up. The state of Texas had probably at least two hundred DPS officers. We had, we had a hundred and thirty-eight game wardens here with Swiftwater boats. And at one point, I looked up, I even saw the FBI and the DEA and the Border Patrol. We had all the state agencies, just about every alphabet entity there is, show up. And we are coming to the near completion of the search and rescue phase. That's phase one. Then we get to the recovery stage. And where we are, folks, is we're getting ready to start the recovery stage. We're finishing up with the search and rescue. We're down to three missing. And that was the Herculean effort for them to be able to track all those people that got down. Most of them were tourists that came in town that left and went back home and didn't report back in that they were there. That's what a lot of that was. But the recovery's gonna look like, it's gonna start with the debris. And there's two debris meetings that we go to. Debris management, which Mr. Jones and Commissioner Harris attend regularly. And then the debris burn, which I attend along with Commissioner Harris. It's on two of us in a room at a time, which technically is the way it's supposed to be, and that's what we're trying to do. But the notice that has, has gone out, to put your debris by the sidewalk or by the right-of-way. We want to encourage everyone to do that. If you haven't done it, try to do it. The more that we can do that, the state has already contracted with the contractors that are gonna go pick that stuff up and supervise the burns. So that's an economic burden off of us that the state has voluntarily picked up, and we're grateful for it.
Tom and I started the Sunday after the event with the debris removal meetings, and it's taken several twists and turns which direction we were going. And I will tell you, actually, they had the state, it was, you know, started Sunday, Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember. But Tom and I come in those meetings, and they said the state's taking it over. It was a sigh of relief from him and I. Debris removal has bankrupt counties before, and that's huge. So we don't get to call a lot of shots in this deal, but it's not gonna be on the backs of all y'all in here as taxpayers. So that, that was huge for us. And they had to go out for rebid, Judge, on contractors, and it's a quick deal. Today at noon is the deadline. They're gonna review those bids this afternoon and get started. Keep your fingers crossed, by the end of the week, that should be going full steam ahead. Okay?
The Texas dots already, you've probably seen them out on the roads. They're already doing some debris pickup. On, on, on any of their roads, they began at the beginning of last week. And there are, but there, don't think because there's still stuff on the road, they're, they're gonna be like doodlebugs back and forth for months. But they are taking care of their portion of that. They began that already. They didn't have to go through the bid process. They, they, they went, they had the bid selected, and they had to go back to rebid because they, because of all the work that y'all are doing in the community, it reduced the scope of work. And so it caused them to have to, to go out for a rebid. So, you know, that's a good thing, right? That's a compliment to what's been going on in our community. And they should begin, I think they said maybe Thursday.
Should. That's why I say cross your fingers. You know how that stuff works. They've identified two places for, where these, Texas, I have their incinerators. One's down at Center Point on school property across from the stadium. Another one, the old soccer fields out by the landfill. We'd love to have something out west where there's less trucking, but there's nothing. They don't wanna do it on private property. So that was.
Can I make a couple of comments? One is that people aren't being allowed to deliver to those locations themselves. That
Right.
That is not going to be allowed, but another is to remind people to sort, sort their debris.
Oh, yeah.
So that it can be picked up appropriately.
Yeah, and, and, and I've seen that going out thirty-nine. Most of them are, are put the, the woody material, plant material in one deal. Your, the white goods, the refrigerators, appliances, that kind of stuff is another one. And then another one for like your sheet rock and stuff like that. Three, three piles. Now, just because they come through and pick up your plant material and leave the other, they'll get to it, you know, different, different truck or what have you. It's gonna take some patience, but anyway, that's, that's the way it's gonna work. When those contractors break, pick up your plant material and take it out there, they're gonna let it dry for six, uh, six weeks, wouldn't it?
Two months, sixty days.
Yeah, two months, eight weeks. And before they start incinerating, and I've never seen one of these that's their incinerators, but supposedly a little bit of smoke at the beginning of the day, then there's no smoke once they get started. And they can do three, they wanna do three to four hundred tons a day at these things.
And it'll leave about an inch and a half of ash when they're done.
Yeah. And this, and they've all said that just the debris is just so massive, much worse than Harvey and all that. So that's where we're at on that. Debris burning, Judge and I will be in another meeting. We've had two already. This afternoon, we'll have another one. And there's talk, what we wanna do there. And like the other one, it takes a little, few twists and turns, but we're gonna iron, iron something out. It's my hope that we can identify just the river corridor and the flooding. Maintain the burn ban on that, and maybe open it up to the rest of the county. There's a lot of people, a lot of them, Mountain Home and other areas, Center Point, that weren't affected by the flood. This has been a pretty good time to burn, and we haven't been able to.
This process will take probably about six to eight months. Don't expect a quick fix.
Nope.
Now FYI, let me kinda walk you through the stages. We've had, you hear it's talk about floodplains, and then there's what they call the floodway. And the floodway is where the water really flows. Okay? There are things that people wanna burn out here in the country before August gets here that are, were not the result of the flood. And we, we wanna be able to let them do that. But right now, we've got a burn ban on. And the rate-limiting step for us is, the S and R teams are trying to take the, the dogs over the piles one more time. This is the third time over. They've already done it twice. This is to double-check, triple-check for human remains. When they, when they complete a pile and there is nothing to report there, then they, they put the number twenty-three on that pile to keep track of it, and they have it all.
It's plotted on a map.
I don't know what GIS is, but it's a computer program that shows where the stuff, where, where the piles are. And we're gonna use that to, to begin the burning process. But we're trying to finish that last search one last time before we start the, the burning. And so that's probably gonna come later this week, and we'll go into more detail about that, but that's kinda where we are. That, that's gonna be where we, we transition from the search and rescue to the recovery. And, and the other phases that we're gonna do is repair, rebuild. These are all the different phases of emergency management. I'm learning them one at a time, but where we are right now is the debris and the start, start of the recovery.
Let me add something else. The latest information will be on Kerr County's website, the Facebook's page. I tried to share it to mine, but that's the latest information. And, you know, I think, I know, I mean, Lisa puts two, three updates yesterday on there, so follow those. That'll, that cut down on our calls and emails so we can do other things. That's where the latest information will be for you. And the, a lot of these things will be on there latter part of the week, next, next step.
With that segue, let's transition to the next item on the agenda, which is one point two. Consider and discuss to take appropriate action regarding the burn ban. Now, being a lawyer, I got roped into the meeting to start this thing about what we can tell private property owners to do with regard to their property. And guess what that is? Nothing. Burn ban. Burn ban is the only real tool we have on private property owners and what they do. And that's why we've got the burn ban on. When we met two weeks ago, I guess it was last week.
Yeah, last week.
Last week. We, I, I took the burn, the, the burn ban is normally handled by the county judge. In Kerr County, we don't do it that way. We delegate that to each of the precinct commissioners, because the county is so diverse. Like what's good in four is not the same as three, and, and you can see that. And so what they're asking us to do is to reconsolidate that back with the county judge for speed of reaction of what we're gonna do, because when we start doing this burn ban, it's not gonna be blanket. We're not gonna light the county up one day and watch everything burn down. We're gonna do it in, in, in steps, in sections.
It's, it's our suggestion that rather than opening it up, because your property's been checked, you can burn your burn pile, well then, it'll be monkey see, monkey do. Other, since people see smoke, they're gonna start lighting their own, and maybe they haven't been vetted. We want the dogs to go through everything first, and then, okay, then we can start opening it. And just, this is a possibility. We hadn't been refined. Maybe we go from Hunt West, and then Ingram to Hunt, and so forth down the river, or vice versa, start down the other end of the county. But that's the thoughts, and we can get extra fire departments, state fire departments in here to maybe be on hand if we need, need them when we start doing this. But the beauty part about where most of this stuff is, there's no grass. Where you see those piles and stuff, it shouldn't be as bad. You guys know better than me, but y'all see that.
But the reason behind we're reconsolidating the burn ban authority is to work in lockstep with TIDAM and, and, and the state agencies. And we're gonna do it, it's not gonna be the whole county gets, burn ban comes off of the whole county. The whole burn ban comes off of a precinct. It's gonna be pickup section by pickup section. And we're encouraging people to push as much debris out to the curb or the rightaways as you possibly can for pickup. Because once, once the debris alongs the rightaways and the curbs are picked up, then that section is going to be, have the burn land lifted for that section. So these are individual permits that, that we're granting to those homeowners to be able to burn. And then, and you can see how this is, have one, one section burning one day, another section another day, and try, try to have some control over what's going on and not just have mass lightups. So that's, that's what we're doing.
We'll have our third meeting today, and
At three o'clock.
Hopefully get further down the road on this.
And, and believe me, we, I feel for the people outside the river corridor and what have you are wanting to burn, and, and their patience has been great, and they've understood every time I, I've given them the reason why we're holding off. Part of it was the sheriff asked us last Monday that we want a burn ban on because of all the helicopter flights up and down. It was, it was hampering their, their recovery, this search and what have you. One, before we get too far, Judge, did we mention, did Charlie mention the town hall tomorrow evening?
He does.
Okay.
It's like six?
Six thirty, six thirty, Engle, Thomas High School. And we'll have some different agencies there to answer a lot of questions, and, you know, maybe some do's and don'ts right now. Okay?
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, really give the authority back to the judge on burn bans.
Second.
Got a motion in the second discussion?
I would ask, as we look at burn ban, to consider outside end. The end being where the river and the corridor is, where the debris sorting is so important, needs to be probably one of the last areas to get it burned under control mechanisms, which is the burn ban debris piles. I'm grateful for the state doing that. On the outside being up north and south of the counties where there wasn't the flooding issues, that we consider that as the first corridors to burn?
I think that'll be part of their overall plan, is what they're meeting with. Is, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Like burning up the Gillespie line right now?
Yeah, the biggest fear is, the biggest fear is, Mr. Holt is, is that if, if, once somebody strikes a match, everybody does.
That's why we're trying to get some, some semblance of control over this process.
You know, we can put stuff on Facebook, on the county website, we can put out on, on the radio, newspapers, and then people will say, nobody ever told me, other than a knock on the door, I, I don't, I don't know what else we can do. And, and so bear with us, folks. Share this information with your friends.
That's my ask, outside end.
Makes sense.
There is a record of the burn piles that have been searched, and there will be a record of those that they're completing the search on. And the people who have already had them checked, inspected, will be able to call in and get the permit to go ahead and burn, and we'll lift those one at a time as they get called in. And then for those that, they haven't gone, the dogs haven't been over yet, as you get cleared, then you will be able to, to, to call in and get your permit to be able to burn. So this is a, a mother may I situation. You're gonna have to get, have to talk to us. If you haven't talked to us, you're gonna be in trouble. And we ask for everybody's cooperation as we do that. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Let's move on to item one point three. Consider and discuss to take appropriate action to ratify the interlocal agreement between Kerr County and the Texas Division of Emergency Management Consider and discuss to take appropriate action to ratify the interlocal agreement between Kirk County and the Texas Division of Emergency Management for the use of the Hill Country Youth Event Center for operation and coordination of state emergency response, recovery, preparedness, and mitigation efforts.
A move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in the second to approve the contract. By the way, that's, contract for the train is four thousand dollars a day. Use that facility.
That's a good deal, I just wanna ask the county attorney, I mean, we've got forty-one pages under exhibit A. So I guess in this scenario, we're considered a vendor? I mean, it was a little bit confusing, I'm just wondering, are there particular areas of concern at all in that, or you're, you're good with all the darn thing?
No, we've worked through that contract to make sure it has all the terms that we need, that FEMA says are appropriate.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming it's their standard contract, and they wouldn't have let us make any changes to it anyway. But it's, it's a lot of language in there for.
It's, it's working with the government.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
So we have a motion? And a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say that we've been very fortunate, the campus of the event center with the field over there for the helicopters, and even the dirt bomb, it was full of boats for a lot of the, a lot of the event, but it, it's worked out extremely well. I, I, boy, we'd be in a mess if we didn't have it.
I'd be remiss if I didn't again mention long-term EOC, well beyond this.
I took Commissioner Jones's show, your ideal yesterday, or day before, somewhere, somewhere in the last week or so.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
I mean, I just, I go back to my.
Regular issues.
Back to my experiences having a standing EOC, that we can hop right into in case there's an emergency. Not a portable one, but a standing EOC that has all the radios and equipment and computers that we hop in between the city and the county.
Yep.
And we do have a pretty suitable building ready to be stood up for that, which is outside of the, what's in the Hill Country Youth Event Center, River Star Park. Just so publicly I say that.
Emergency Operation Center. Those who don't know what EOC was, we're learning a lot of them.
Well, I'm still trying, there's too many of them.
They said they have a book of acronyms, if you ever want to download it. It's about that thick, and it's nothing but acronyms. So, I don't want it.
Or Colbridge Pacers for that.
There you go. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other conversations here? Those in favor, raise your hand, unanimous. 1.4, consider and discuss to take appropriate action to waive floodplain permit fees for those affected by the July 4, 2025 flood. Charlie, you doing that?
Oh, yes. Please. They all got flooded out, and we need to waive their permit fees.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say it. But I do have a question, or, or two for him, I mean, what is the floodplain? How much is the permit, what are we waiving, I'm just kinda curious.
It's on a sliding scale, depends on what you're doing. If it's just for a septic system in the floodplain, it's seventy-five dollars. If it's for erosion control, it's seventy-five bucks. If it's a residential home, it's two hundred, and if it is a business, it's four hundred. These folks need every single penny, let's give it to them.
I a percent agree, I was just curious.
Is this a geographic exemption for creekways and?
We know everyone who is affected by this flood, because we have the, the limits, including up creeks, okay?
Yeah.
So you could have been on Quinlan Creek, and that thing came ripping because it came from the river back up stream. So, it's, it's, it's everybody. We've got a good map. We know where, where everything is, we've got the change finder program, we've got the tometry, the one inch pixels.
Because I don't deserve one of a little Cypress Creek up ten miles.
We're, we're gonna figure this out, it's just Charlie and Bobby are gonna tell other people what to do, and do it for us. That's where we need the help.
The applications will be driven by the. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, unanimous. 1.5, consider and discuss to take appropriate action to determine whether to proceed with the election calling for a venue tax for improvements at the Hill Country Youth Event Center, Ms. Solder.
Good morning. On July eleventh, we received a favorable fiscal analysis from the state comptroller, which would allow us to go out for election on a two percent venue tax. However, it is my recommendation to the court that we not pursue the two percent venue tax at this time.
I agree.
Second.
Well, okay, I, I agree, we don't pursue it.
So we have a motion, and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, this, right now is not the time to be looking at any type of a new tax. And we've made that pretty clear, although a lot of conversations allude differently, they're false. And it should not be projected at this time for the people in this county that are hurting, of any kind. And, and I don't appreciate the rumors that are out there, and they need to stop, because it takes up precious time that we need to be working, dealing with this, to have to put out those fires. So thank you for that recommendation. The people that are staying in our hotels and, that, that would apply to are here serving this county right now. And so we, we don't need to be looking towards that type of a taxation.
The false rumors are rampant. Some of them are just flat, not false, they're just lies.
Well, some people have been respectful enough to call and ask.
Yes.
Rather than just go out on Facebook.
Right.
So, thank you.
I will say, and I agree wholeheartedly with the sentiment here, but, boy, wouldn't it have been nice if we had a concrete floor in there and, and an extra?
It would have been, it would have been, but then where would we have put all, where would we have put the five hundred boats that we had stored in there?
Parked them on a concrete floor, but anyway, that's okay, at some point.
I'll put in a store request for concrete.
Thank you.
If you can, absolutely.
Those in favor, raise your hand, unanimous. Item 1.6, discussion regarding proposed department requested budgets and tax rate. Anyone want to ask y'all to take a look at your departments?
My department didn't ask for anything other than what they presented first time around.
I, uh.
That's always sets out.
I had discussions with road and bridge on this topic, liaison for them, and, and I told them they didn't need to come in. What we're prepared to do, and what we're planning on doing, is every year we try to re-SEAL coat about ten percent of the roads. So every ten years a road gets taken care of. We're pumping the brakes on that. We did get, have some county roads damaged from the flood, as you can imagine, but in their words this morning, we got lucky, not near as bad as, as it could have been. But they're still stopping the SEAL coat operations to take care of the flood damage. So, other than that, they don't foresee any big issue right now. We have some ri, bridge damage, but that's down the road, we don't know if it, how bad they are. If it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollar fix or a six million dollar fix. I have to wait and see the structure damage, if there is structure damage. So a lot of that stuff is wait and see, you know, and when we're talking about the tax rate, I approached this disaster a lot like we did the China virus several years ago. We didn't know what was around the corner. We don't know what's around the corner on this. And back then, we tightened the belts, didn't have a tax increase. Told our employees there was no cost of living rates, because they were getting checks, maybe their neighbors weren't getting checks. Businesses were closed, stuff like that. We didn't know what to do, or we did nothing as far as raising taxes on them, maybe, what might be around the corner. And that's gonna be my approach on this disaster here. And so the people that started immediately saying that we were jumping to an eight percent tax, that's a flat lie. Flat lie. He, our tax assessor was charged with getting the no new revenue rate as well, what we normally use. So that's my two cents.
Well, he did a good job, and he was responsible.
He's prudent, that's.
It's statutory requirement.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You can only calculate it if we give him approval.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna take the same approach, I think we go through this budget process just like we always would. Uh, because we don't know what's to come yet, and, and we can prepare as best we want, but until we get done with assessments and everything that we have, we don't have anywhere to go yet. So we just have to move forward with our budget process.
Well, we need to see the proposed budget without many of these add-ons.
And you know what? And, and what probably one reason why I want to do it, we're already behind. We eliminated one budget workshop already because of this.
Sure.
So he wants everything figured out immediately. I do, we do the same thing every year, we ask the auditor to give us, if it's gonna be a cost of living rates, show us what a two percent would be, three percent so far. Have that in your back pocket for us to look at, so we can move swiftly on things.
And all that's fine, but there is no way that today we could make a decision on what a salary increase is gonna be, I'm sorry.
Misf, misinformation.
I agree with your comments about tightening the belt, but, you know.
If it was something we were gonna have to, if we were gonna have to look at it to the normal budget process, we're prepared to look at it now.
Yeah, yeah. And speaking of the false rumors, I think I stomp out three or four every day. Tom, he said, I'm not looking at Facebook, well, I've been deemed that person, but, oh my gosh, this is absurd. If it sounds too crazy to believe, call us, because it usually is.
There are two that I have concentrated on this week, and one's the airport, and the second is animal control. The airport, I want to make sure that we seek reimbursement from the state for the use of our airport, for all the aircraft that have been operating. As you know, there's loss of revenue with that, when all the aircraft have been here, they're not charging them for ramp and landing fees, and normally they would. So I think it's important that they capture those costs and make sure we get reimbursement for that. When I spoke last week with Joe Kennedy, we discussed that, so I want to get on the record, make sure we do seek for reimbursement.
I would be cautious about the reimbursement from the state until we see where FBO's gonna come to.
That's right.
It's both state and federal.
Right.
But he's capturing all those costs, I just don't want to say it's free airfield use, because it's still an impact on FBO. There's no way around it, and I appreciate all the fuel sales, that's been great. We've been moving a lot of fuel for that, but it's also about use, so that's number one, and that's capturing costs for that for this year. The second one, you know I'm gonna talk about, is animal control facility. That's probably the most contentious budget item that I've discussed with Reagan, and to a lesser degree with Jonathan. And I know we have a committee judge to sit and discuss that even further. And we've already done a budget allotment, right, for this year. For, to make sure there's money for the cages, and we already went through the bids for that. And I have proposed probably two methodologies. One is to do it on the cheap, right? Probably saw my pink and yellow sticker description that we did a while back on that before the flood. We do have money set aside for the cages, dog cages in particular, and I would ask that we just use the money that has been allotted this year, and be very frugal instead of asking for extra money next year. That means some things are gonna have to be forsaken, I know that. But I'm not ready with unforeseen commitments for next year's budget to put a lot of excess animal control demands on our money, because I think it needs to go to guardrails, and it needs to go to asphalt, and other commitments that we're going to have. Because there's no way to continue our chip ceiling of roads, I don't think, right now, and address our safety needs for guardrails. So I think, folks, we can deal with old furniture for a little bit. This is what I'm saying, in the animal control facility, and cheaper cameras, and I hope our fence bid comes in well. But use the money that we've been allotted for this year. That's where I stand, and that's what I think is the appropriate thing to do right now for the animal control facility. Thank you. The new one, that is, and then sell the old one, so I'm on record with that.
You know, a, a lot of money has poured into Kirk County, and I forget the name of the fund, but, you know. No, they can't help.
I ain't talking about that. I'm gonna ask.
Good.
The money that has been donated to the community foundation is not county money, it is foundation money. And it is controlled by the foundation and their, their board of directors, and they have their own committees that determine who to make the grants to. So that is a completely insular program with the community foundation.
And they go to 501Cs. That's what, that's their charge, the 501Cs.
And they don't go to individuals. There are several other funds floating around out there that I don't, I don't know who they are, where they are, how much they are, but there are other funds out there, just like KENS, K E N S, and San Antonio has a fund, that we're gonna need to get a handle on, see, see what that is. But the last thing that I wanted to talk about in budget, before we get down to some of the specifics, is we're kicking this can down the road. We're in the middle of a disaster, we're in the middle of budget season, and if we do not enact a budget, and I'm gonna turn to our county attorney, my understanding is that if we do not enact a budget, then whatever the budget was for this fiscal year is the budget for the next fiscal year. And I think the same thing is true of the tax rate. If we don't adopt a tax rate, it's the same as last year's, right?
Except appraisal values go up, so the tax rate needs to be adjusted.
I've been wondering where you're gonna get up there, Mr. Reeves.
We're sweating it off, I think.
Your question again, Judge?
If we don't adopt a tax, a tax rate this year, it defaults back to last year's tax rate.
Or the no new revenue rate, whichever is lower.
Yeah, there you go.
Not good to me.
So we're gonna have to start taking action pretty soon, because the deadlines are, and I'll get together with the auditor and the county attorney and make sure we get notice out there about what the deadlines are, the drop dead deadlines.
Right.
Any other discussion on this, or deny it?
Do we have any idea yet how much revenue we lose because of all the damage? Has anybody come up with an estimate or guesstimate even?
Yes.
There was a.
With great difficulty, we did, we did get an estimate.
Sure.
Mr. Reeves?
Revenue is still to be determined, Commissioner. Loss in value, preliminary, very rough estimate from the Central Appraisal District. Loss in value, countywide, over two hundred million.
Okay, so our loss of revenue is with the current tax rate or next tax rate?
Until I see the breakdown of these, how much is different types of value, I can't give you an answer to that.
Understood.
I feel like.
I'm saying the value, I, I want to know what the impact in our revenue is likely to be, dollars.
At this point in time, I really.
It's too early.
It's too early. I would ask, in this subject to everybody else's schedule, if we could have a workshop around the Fourth of August, two weeks, I could provide you much more accurate answers than I could. And if we could do a workshop, then we could have some time to discuss all of this in depth.
I'll make a motion that we hold a workshop on August fourth.
This is a discussion item right now.
Okay.
But I think, I think we all want to get a workshop.
Well, and, and a lot of those people are gonna be able to opt out, you know, on taxes and what have you.
There's a temporary exemption form that is available online at my website. You can come in my office, Appraisal District. I believe volunteers are getting them out in Ingram and Center Point today.
Correct.
Which, the forms go to the appraisal district, and then they will look at them. But to be eligible for that, they must fill out this form and turn it in. And they have until, I believe, October eighteenth.
And just so the public knows, you mentioned Center Point, I'm a little bit more familiar with that one. That's going on today, as we speak, from ten to two. They're gonna be at the Center Point Historic Park in the Red Roof Building, and that's Barbara Ferguson, kind of took the lead on that, she works for our Wesredell, our district representative. And so, we're going to have that thing staffed from 10:00 to 2:00 every day this week.
And I believe the same way in Ingram.
Yeah, I just don't know the details on that, but I wanted the public to be there.
I want to say, and you can look, I think it's the Edward Jones office in Ingram, right there around Wells Fargo. Also, our office, outside those hours, we have reopened the annex that, as you may or may not know, one of my employees was caught in this mess with substantial damage. And she's the annex manager.
Any other discussion? And with that, let's take a five-minute recess. Go ahead. We'll come back.
I thank you.
Listen to Commissioner.
Thank you for the break. I needed that.
You're always asking for breaks.
Yeah, I know.
Little guys get lost.
I've been hearing short jokes all week long, two weeks, from somebody else on the court.
I don't know who that was.
Sylvia. A bully and I want to talk to you about it.
The next item on the agenda is 1.7. Consider discussing appropriate action to appoint a grievance committee pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code in the event that a grievance is filed by an elected official regarding the proposed salaries for elected officials in the coming fiscal year. This is something we do every year. This is how elected officials can bring to our attention that they're not being paid enough, in their opinion at least. So we form a grievance committee.
Can we...I'm just asking, I know we do this, but when I was reading the Local Government Code on that, that option one that has already in place for that nine-person panel, to be the sheriff, county tax assessor-collector, county treasurer, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney, criminal district attorney, and a number of public necessary to bring up that nine, is that the method that we're going to go with on that?
That's what we usually do.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I read. I was reading through all of it, and I want to make sure that's what we're doing.
And usually, we don't have anything. I mean.
We have in the past.
I know, we had a couple, I know of one. Usually not.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Got a motion, a second, do it. The statutory.
Yes.
Persons.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Judge.
Yes.
Justice, I'm calling on the last side.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name's Terry Hall, live on 118 Independence. Also represent We The People Liberty in Action. So what am I...what...I was supposed to speak at the last agenda item, so I don't know if I can go back and say anything about that at this point, but what we're hearing is that you're not going to raise the tax rate? Is that what we heard?
There's been no discussion about the tax rate at this point.
Okay. And then for this, can you explain better what this grievance committee means about elected official salaries?
They were...we have a publicly noticed salary for elected officials. Yes.
There is, under the Local Government Code, there's a provision where elected officials can file a grievance about their salary. And in order for that, I guess in lieu of officially, they...the court has, over the past few years, gone ahead and appointed the grievance committee, which includes the nine people that Commissioner Jones talked about. And just in case, so that if one is filed, there's a committee that's ready to hear the grievance and make a decision on it in order to make a recommendation to the commissioner's court.
So it's a grievance about the elected official's salary?
Yes.
Yes.
And so who would make a grievance like that?
The elected official.
Well, we don't know.
I see. So has anyone made a grievance from our court? About your salary?
In the past, yes.
This year.
In the past. But not this year.
Yeah, we haven't said any salaries or anything.
It's just in case, Terry.
Okay. So you're not...there's nobody that's currently got a grievance asking for more money?
No.
Okay. And it's a standing committee?
Yes.
Pretty much.
Yes, that's right.
You know, I've always been opposed to elected officials asking for more money, and that's come up before.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Let's move on to item 1.8. Ms. Sapohter. This is considered discussing appropriate action to approve the fiscal year 2025, 2026 Kerr County Wage Adjustment. This is in lieu of a COLA. We do not do cost of living allowances. But we do wage adjustments. And so this is the proposed wage adjustment that's coming here. May proceed.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner. So I passed out a sheet that just has some calculations on what a wage adjustment could look like for my current budget. Just for your review and consideration.
That's the one you just passed?
That's the one we just passed out. Maybe on the bottom there.
Yes.
Sylvia, if you could, background. What was given last year? What's the federal rate? Why is this being presented today?
Last year was 4%. I don't know what the federal rate, I don't have that with me, I'm sorry. Three, is it three? Okay. I'm sorry, I did not prepare with that one. But last year, we gave 4% wage adjustment. And our salary survey gentleman indicated two and a half was kind of average for this area. So we started with that one. We just kind of gave a couple of different options.
I would say that it's not that anybody's not deserving, because our county employees have certainly risen to the occasion, but I'm not particularly going to be in favor of the wage adjustment this year.
And I think it's premature at this point.
I agree. If there's any chance at all that we're going to have to raise taxes on people, we're not going to be all... Certainly, we need to pre-fireing them. Rethink the whole thing about salary adjustments. Till we see the full budget.
And we'd give them some. In the past, it still reached our goal of the no-new revenue rate. So that'll be the goal. My goal.
Yeah, it's hard to look at today, though.
I hate to be the spoiler. When we're losing as much as $200-plus million in tax value, that will affect the last six months. First six months are still the regular tax rate. Same on the appraised. Not even first six months?
That was pro-rated in the mail.
Right. Oh, that's pro-rated?
Yes.
And so we know we're going to lose revenue off of that decreased appraised value.
Doesn't mean we have to put it on the backs of everybody else that wasn't protected, so this is premature.
Sure.
You know, Tom and I have tapped out on a lot of things together and been at the EOC every day except yesterday. And we're in a lot of the same meetings together, talking about the same issues and stuff. And don't let me put words in your mouth, Tom, but I don't...we don't know what's around the corner. So why would we tax like we did? Is that kind of what you're feeling? Similar?
Yeah, I just, when it comes to this particular thing here, we'd never discuss that. And I don't...
We hadn't seen it till today.
Yeah, yeah. And I just think right now, I tend to agree with what the judge is saying. We don't know how much we're going to have a loss of income here, so I don't know that we're in any position to even talk about. And I agree with what you're saying, too, though. It's not the fault of the employees. Our employees are working hard. They deserve some type of a raise there. But we may not be fiscally in a position to do that. So we're going to have to stop and look at it when we get...well.
Go ahead.
Well, at some point, we're going to have some money, I presume, from FEMA or the state that will help offset some of our lost revenue. But we don't know what that is yet.
Tom and I have been in conversations with Ted Cruz's office about, hey, everybody's telling us that we're so far ahead, and I know this, I'm getting off topic a little bit, but, hey, we may need y'all to step in and expedite things rather than put it, specifically, put it on the back of our taxpayers.
Absolutely. But I guess my point is, I mean, there are other means available to this court. We have a pretty good reserve. At least, we were projecting that we would have a $17 million reserve at the end of this current fiscal year, so.
And that's something taxpayers already pay.
If it's not for a time such as this, then what the hell do we need a reserve for? Okay? We can do a tax advance note against whatever we think might be coming in. There's a lot of different things that this court can consider that will alleviate the burden on our taxpayers. And I just want to have that discussion whenever we actually know what the heck we need.
And taxing upfront are a possibility. Man, that doesn't affect me.
If I could ask Sylvia, advocate for the employee. You hear our concerns about raising money to pay for additional wage increases. I need to hear the opposite view. What are you hearing from employees saying that they deserve anywhere from a 2.5 or 3.5, considering what's going on this year?
Of course, I strongly, I strongly, you know, encourage the court to consider a wage adjustment, because, you know, we're out there paying those high taxes, high groceries. We were just at the grocery store this weekend. All of that hasn't changed for employees. And that's been the...for a couple of years now. So all the employees do work hard. We do have some positions at Rodenbridge that we can't get filled. And it's part of it is because our wages are still kind of low. We lose them to TechStop. I mean, that's one of the biggest departments that I feel has the most impact. And so, yes, I think raising our, even if it's just 2.5%, and I say that, that's not what I meant. 2.5% would help get us to a better place for, you know, like Rodenbridge, who struggles. I mean, I think they have like five positions open and have had them. I know since I've been in HR here in Kerr County, they've had at least four. And so I know Nadine has a few positions. And the thing is, we can't get qualified applicants to apply because they're looking for more money. I think another department just went through that. Had probably a very good applicant, but wanted more money. And I think some of our wages are still just a little low. Maybe not everybody's, but some are. So, I mean, I do, I am in favor of the employees. That's my number-one job here, just to make sure that employees are taking care of them.
And there are two different approaches. One is across-the-board wage increase, which is what is in front of us. The other is individual budgets that are submitted into our portfolio. That talks about salary adjustments, just so we're clear. If we deserve, if we feel that the Rodenbridge worker deserves a higher rate, that would be addressed by them in their own budget?
They can, if they requested it.
One route.
Yeah. We have a special request sheet that you guys have a copy of, that that's what departments came in and requested at the beginning of the budget process.
We have to hear both sides.
Yeah, my thoughts.
Yeah, and I worked for a city for many years when I was younger. And I'm going to tell you, I expected a raise every year, a cost-of-living raise. And so it's not about what I think people deserve at all. It's about, are we going to have the funding to do that?
And we've been fortunate enough to do it with no-new revenue rate.
Correct.
And what have you.
Yeah.
But do we have to make a decision on this today? Can we just pass on this for a while?
No, he's got to be able to figure out.
Well.
Sorry, I was going to say, in order to get our timeline and get what we need to provide the auditor for the budget, I mean, I think we're already kind of...
We're behind.
In the process.
But it is what it is. The only thing that I would point out is, we know we're not going to have the same revenues we had last year. As a general rule, we always take last year's revenues and project a reasonable estimation of what we think that, with the appraisal, appraised values, et cetera, and the new construction. We get new tax base. And we project out the revenues. And we've done a pretty good job of doing that on our watch here. We are in a bind in being able to project revenues. And at some point, we're going to have to decide what expenses we're going to have to cover with whatever the tax rate may be. But with the disaster and the expenses related to the disaster that have not been reimbursed, and may not be reimbursed even in the next fiscal year, we don't know. It's a very big unknown. Big unknown on revenues. And we usually, the way this process usually goes, we figure out how much we think we need to spend. Figure out how much revenues we think we're going to get. And we back into a budget. And we're not getting any traction on this. And time's running. And if we don't get it, we don't do something, the default is last year's budget, and that will be a trade-in.
In regards to our reserves, how can those be applied? You've told me before, Tanya, that it can be used for emergencies and/or it can be used towards a budget, right? Am I correct in that?
So for the current year, we would have to declare emergency, which is already in them, to use those for the budget. And we're tracking what's a call star, and we're trying to be not here with those. That's why we're asking for the 214 forms. There's people working on it, asking speed. As far as next year, you can spend however much you want to until it's gone, however generally you want for three months' worth, which is where we come up with the 25% reserve. On it, that is because your tax money starts coming in, in theory, in January or November. And so you've got to be able to cover October, November, and December.
Can you tell, remind me, what's the reserve right now?
Dollar mark plus, I don't think dollar plus. It's 25%. It's above 25%. Usually at budget time, when we're budgeting, most of them, you go back a year, a few years, we budget down to that 25%.
Well, I'm talking about this fiscal year.
It was somewhere around 25%. I just have to look at it.
It was somewhere around 17.
And again, we're talking about...
It was more.
Little bit. It might be. It is more than that.
Yeah, it's more than that. It's about 19, I think.
Well, maybe it is.
Yeah. And so for 25%, you're looking at needing to maintain about 15 in there, or?
I think it's a little determined. It's all going to depend on what your estimates are.
I like that you want to be right on the, and thank you for that. I appreciate that.
It's a guideline.
Yeah, but she doesn't want to just blurt numbers out, and I appreciate that.
No, the 25% is a guideline. But these are exceptional circumstances.
That's a, that's a pretty strict number, right?
There's not a strict number as far as there being regulations for that. However, it's pretty much from a business standpoint. Most of your others are trying to go, they're being working for the six months to take the emergency.
Right.
I mean, we've been blessed that we've been able to have at least 25%. In many cases, quite a bit more.
Yes.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean.
Well, point being, we should have some room to move there, right?
I don't know how to answer your question when you say we have some room.
Well, room to be able to stop and look a little closer at, if we can, in the next week, we should not, maybe get a little closer numbers, as to what our loss might be on the budget. I know we, I know we will have better numbers from, from the infrastructure damage over the next week, to see how that's been affected.
So none of that has been discussed or is part of the conversation?
That hasn't been, has not been considered.
It hasn't been looked at, it hasn't been done. As far as the emergency part, that's one part of the FEMA part. It's A and B categories, I believe is what it is. And that, that's one set. And then you've got another set that I believe is C or Z, I want to say. And that's going to be for the admin, administration of whatever projects. What I'm hearing is, we've got about $8.5 million damage on the road.
That's wrong.
And again, that's, again, that's what I'm here to bring to you. And with our people and with our employees, and we looked at the damage. It's, may not be correct. That is true, because it was way early. And that's why it's so hard to talk about a lot now. So all you can do is look at what your estimates are. I believe there's two lift stations that have damage to it. So that, I believe the deductible is $500,000 on those. So we have $1 million there. So you, the thing about wanting to mix your budget, and you've gotten that information, you've got better information on what the load damage is, we need that, because there's a big difference in $100,000 and $8.5 million.
Well, about 6 million of that number you're looking at is for that Cade Loop. And Charlie, are you still here? Yeah. Well, if you tell them what we're looking at doing on that real quick, because it's important on the numbers. And he's got more around the motion.
Yo, that, that bridge right there, when we saw it, and as our guys would drive across it in big equipment, they said, we can feel it teeter a little bit, okay? But the bridge deck is sitting on top of a bunch of foundations, and it's stable. I've had it evaluated by two different engineers. One of them evaluated it on three occasions, okay? No, it's been evaluated by four engineers, because TechStop has looked at it. Task Force One looked at it on the first day. That was the day I got real angry, because someone said some AGI engineer came out here and said that the bridge was okay for emergency. And I said, I'm the only AGI engineer in this town. What's going on? I didn't realize that the Texas Department of Emergency Management had already, well, they're already in town, and they were just like bees, all over. I didn't get it. I was trying to take care of my county, and we were trying to do it on our own. And once we realized that that was our resource, I quit running. And I stayed in that emergency operations center and gave direction to 2,600 people to do it for us. Okay, so the, it's been evaluated. I had Pete Dawson engineers come and pro bono, and, you know, their services. They give it to the treasurer. The treasurer says, they gave us this much value. That counts towards our 25% match, okay, with FEMA. So we're logging, a lot of people have donated a lot of different things. We've seen some parks get cleaned up by people that are in the community. They want no recognition. So don't try to figure out who they are, just, just thank God. We've got a lot of those donations going to count towards our 25% match. All that to say, the bridge deck has slid downstream as much as maybe a foot. If you look at that bridge, it should be straight as an arrow, and it looks like a rainbow. A tiny rainbow. A very, very, it's there, and it's noticeable. It needs to just simply be shifted back over. I'm working on a STAR request today to see if we can get that done now.
They don't know what a STAR request is.
Oh, so that's State of Texas Assistance Request. Is the R for request, or does it stand for something else? Are we saying request twice?
We're saying request, but we don't know that's it, yeah.
So anyway, guys, the governor, you have got to thank the governor, okay? The debris management alone, I've heard the word Bill Yuns with an S on it, okay? And they've picked up the tab. And you all know it would break this county, and we would have to just leave it and look at it for 50 years. It's going to be going soon.
And when will we have an answer as to whether or not we can get that done?
Not, not yet. I'm working diligently on it, and that's one of the reasons why, as soon as this meeting's over, I got to leave. I can't talk to reporters. Let me do my job at the appropriate time. We can have those discussions.
But that's, that's important information that she's going to need to know.
Charlie, what's the normal split between TechStop and the county on bridge?
The normal what? I missed the first one.
The normal split.
Oh, okay, so any bridge that's in the state of Texas or in the nation, there's a national bridge program, because we were tired, the nation was tired of people driving across a bridge, and it just crumbles. That's horrible, right? So they said, any bridge that has a 20-foot span or more needs to be on this inventory. So you have this national inventory. Well, Cade Loop Bridge has got five 50-foot spans, okay? So it's long, right? And so it's definitely on the bridge inventory. And what TechStop does is, every two year, two years, they send a team of engineers, and it's never the same engineer twice. So they don't get to reuse last year's, you know, two years ago report. And they do full evaluation. Matter of fact, I think TechStop already evaluated this bridge before July 4th. I'm not sure yet. But, and then they evaluate it. And that bridge was built in 2015. It's brand-new. It's a great bridge. And it was built well. We're going to be able to fix it. I'm going to try to get it fixed before everyone leaves town and all the ton of toys leave. We're trying to get it fixed.
Thank you, Charlie.
But that's it.
But normally, TechStop picks up, was it 90% in town?
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 no, no, no. So it's an 80-10-10 split. So the bridge needs to be rebuilt, any bridge in Kerr County, at the appropriate time. 80% comes from the federal government, 10% from TechStop, 10% from the county. And the county can do in-kind matches on other bridges, which we have done in the past, very successfully, I might add. And so, there you go.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, yes.
How did you get off track?
Well, we were trying to figure out what our income is going to be, and so, I'm sorry. I apologize, I sidetracked this. But that's important, because we're dealing with that. And so, that being said, we may not have the loss that we think we have, is my point.
That's the point. Because we originally thought we were going to have to replace the whole bridge for $6 million.
That's, and my comments earlier.
If I get it fixed in the next couple of days, it's going to be a lot less. There'll still be some cosmetic things to do to it after. But if I can just get the decks all shoved back over where they're supposed to be.
So if we can, so if we can end up getting through this with a couple of million-dollar loss on the things that you've currently got, and that probably will be very realistic on that.
I'm being a little more cautionary, because I know TechStop is doing their numbered roads and bridges with asphalt and guard repair. I appreciate that. But we still have a schedule of repair on roads, right? And some of that money was from a fund, right? That went to Fund 15, if I'm right?
Rodenbridge Fund.
Rodenbridge Fund. And I know where some of that money and a lot of that money is from. So I am concerned about that for the future on all our non-numbered roads and bridges and guardrails that need repair, because that is an extra expense that we're going to have to submit for.
Let's get back on track. We're skipping all over around on this budget. We're supposed to be dealing with some very specific things today. One was the wage adjustment. If this court is not ready to make a determination on that today, then we pass it.
Pass it.
Yes, okay. Then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 1.9. Consider discussing appropriate action regarding special request. This, this is in your package, special request. And just to give you a brief recap of what I've done with this, and this is, this is the point in the budget process where everybody's mad at me, but I make my recommendations. In animal control, the driving issue has to do with the law enforcement certification for the deputies. That has been an issue, was an issue last year, the year before. And, huh? Y'all have the special request in the book?
It's this one here.
The special repair.
Do you mind making a? Yeah, Jody's put it in our mailboxes this morning.
Oh, did you?
She's got a lot.
I've got a lot on my desk. Here, that's all right. Here we go.
Can you grab one? Get down, thank you.
There we go.
Unless you start.
You're prepared for us that aren't prepared, right?
Trying, Jody.
Thank you.
Special request.
Okay. Okay. Let's look at the top of the page. We're going to start with animal control and solid waste. And you can see my recommendations there. Basically, I don't see Reagan. Is he standing out there?
He was.
Go on in. This is your...I met with Reagan and one of his deputies about this. This was a very critical issue for you, in your department. The deputies in the animal control and environmental departments are licensed police officers. And they carry their license with Snyder.
Yes.
Constable Snyder.
Yes.
And when we took the SB 22 funds two years ago and used those to increase salaries for the deputies in the KCSO, we did not do that for the deputies in the non-first responder positions. And that has been a critical issue. And you have taken your budget and rearranged it in such a way that you can get the deputies the raises that you were looking for. And I think you eliminated a kennel tech position.
It was, it's animal control officer, full-time animal control officer position eliminated. And then added a, well, and also eliminated a part-time position for a kennel tech and added a full-time position.
But I've accepted your recommendations, and that is, you can, if you look at the totals there, you can see that he actually reduced his budget. That's what I did. We can take these one at a time, or I could just go through the rest of them. Uh, we can take these one at a time, or I could just go through the rest of them.
To recommend for the benefit of everyone so they understand what the savings is or addition is, because they can't see the sheet.
Right. That senior deputy's gone, isn't that?
Yeah, and I guess I need to come back to the court on that.
He's gone. He took another job. I know.
I need, I want to redesignate that as a, uh, regular deputy constable as opposed to that 20, it's a, that is currently a 22.5 pay grade. I want to take it back down to a 21.5. So there'll be two 21.5 pay grades. But I got, I'll have to come back to the court on, to redesignate that position.
So overall, $2,000 savings in salary benefit is what I'm seeing?
I don't have any of that in front of me. I apologize, but, um, because there was a, there was, there was the increase in pay for two deputies. There was a reclassification of our adoption coordinator to shelter, uh, shelter coordinator, shelter manager, um, I don't remember the exact wording that I used there, but there, there's some supervisory stuff with that. So there's a pay increase there. Elimination of one animal control officer, which is a higher pay grade than a kennel, the full-time animal control officers is a, is one, I believe they're a 15 pay grade. The full-time kennel tech is a 14. So eliminating the one animal control officer position, adding the full-time kennel tech and then eliminating the part-time, that was the, the whole thing. And I think that there was a actual budgetary savings there. I just don't remember exactly how much that was. And that's what he's proposing here?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions, Reagan?
Uh, I'm all right with that.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I think next year you're going to be back in here asking for another officer. But, uh, I, I think, uh, if this is, this is the way you want to manage it this year, I'm okay with that.
But this isn't the whole department's budget, right? So your open position is still in there.
It's still, it's still there. I, I was definitely not expecting.
And if you can find somebody to fill it, you'll fill it as and when?
Yes, sir.
You're just not making, for that position, you're not making any special changes. But the position itself should be in the budget.
Anything else? Then, uh, with the treasurer, um, I'm trying to see if we got.
Court of law?
Now, county court of law, that has to do with the court coordinator. Uh, and the recommendation there is to bring her up to the same as, uh, our court administrator, Jody, and Christine, uh, our coordinator upstairs. So all three of them are at the same level. That'd be the 25-2 is what I've recommended there. Next is the treasurer. This is an open, uh, this is, uh, and this is a, this is payroll-driven, right? She's, she does a lot of payroll function. And the recommendation was, uh, two grades and, uh, I'm recommending one, but, uh, I understand she needs, she does need to be increased. So, but that's up for y'all to tell me what you're, what y'all want to do with that one.
Going back to that county court of law, that's a heck of a jump. 15, over 15 grand in one year.
Commissioner Harris, um, to answer your question on that one, we did learn that she was misclassified. She's a court administrator like Jody, like Christine McIntyre. And for some reason, she was called the court coordinator. I did, uh, me and, and some history and, um...
We, we discovered that in the salary study.
Yes.
And, uh, Judge Harris sent me a personal, uh, request.
Good.
Get her competitive with her peers.
All right. So on the treasurer, Tracy had recommended two grades and I recommended one grade increase. Uh, auditor.
Hey, is that the open position right now?
Yep.
Yes.
And it's been open for about how long?
Four months.
Four months? And I, when I saw this, I just assumed you're not getting any takers because maybe the salary?
Yes, I had, was really excited. I had a really good resume and the person wanted 95. And what I'm asking for is payment theory. The person was well-worked and I have lots of experience, but the money's not there.
That's what I thought it was.
It will be more trendy. The 95,000 is also in line with what is, um, the city pays for their assistant director applying. Again, that, that person's been there for a long time also.
And?
So you can't hire anyone for 66. You're hoping to entice someone for 83. That's why there's a 16 grand increase, but it's targeted.
And the responsibilities are different too. It'll be my purchase assistant, so if I'm not here, there will be somebody else here.
Okay. I work with the auditor's office quite a bit and this is a vital office.
I know we've been shorthanded.
They've been shorthanded. Uh, and, uh, I think the request, uh, probably isn't enough to get somebody in there like we want, but, uh, I, I respect that we need to do something. So I'm following the recommendation, the request from the auditor. Then, uh, on the KCSO Administration Assistant One, um, the request was to increase it two grades. And I recognize the need to do something and I'm recommending that we increase it by one grade. And not have a title reclassification like this. Everyone take it from Admin Assistant One to an Admin Assistant Two, and I think Admin Assistant One is probably what I'm thinking. Pardon?
We don't have the guide that you guys have. Will we be able to see what you see?
That should be on the website, I think.
No, it doesn't get posted.
Maybe we could just talk about whether it's an increase or a decrease in salary so that y'all understand. That's all right? This is a $2,338 net increase in salary for the one position is our recommendation. To make it simple.
And then, the next one is a KCSO, uh, SB 22 request. And I think the sheriff knows where I stand on that.
Well, I disagree with you, Judge.
I know you do.
Uh, disagree with you. And, uh, so where do we go from here? Yeah, I'm asking that money, that is money that is designed for that reason. I know what you said, that I, you know, I did not pledge that forever. I would have thought the court would take time and since we're in year three and start picking that up in case it did go away. And if that's the case, then I'm asking for that to be approved through the out-of-county housing. Our income from there. You can go into more detail if you'd like to.
Does that need to be executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Um, I don't know that that piece needs to necessarily be an executive session. Because it's a, and, and I don't have, I don't have...
How would we pull one out of executive? How would we pull one discussion out of executive session and not the rest?
It's coming out of fund.
I don't think that that brings it into closed session. Um, I, I think it's creating some positions. I don't think that it's a appropriate topic for an executive session. Again, I, I don't, I don't look at that.
Well, I mean, I, we need to be upfront with the public about what we're doing. I don't have an issue with that.
But to clarify, Sheriff, you are asking for the salary increase for your position?
Yes.
And it is a $32,269 salary increase?
Yes, I'm asking that in form of a stipend with the Senate Bill 22 money was. I want to make it clear to the public, the court, and all people watching, this is not taxpayer money. I'm asking to fund this $283, $283,000.
Are we allowed to do that?
What's that?
Are, are we allowed to use SB 22 funds for?
Absolutely, yes. Every one of these five proposals you can be using for.
Because I just, I recalled that we like the, uh, you couldn't use it for yourself.
You can't use for the erected official.
It is completely different.
Ours are different.
Okay.
Rules about ours are different. Um, and probably because the, you know, prosecutors get longevity and things like that. So they're, they are treated differently from the sheriff's.
Okay. So we could allocate some of the SB 22 funds for the sheriff himself?
I believe so. I haven't looked at it.
It is designed for the sheriff and his deputies.
Yeah, I, I knew it was for the deputies. I'm just trying to get clarification that...
And I did not elect that on year one, year two. I am in year three.
Sheriff, you know how I stood on all these, but this is a little bit different. SB 22 is not on any of these people's backs.
Well, it's not, but let's go into some detail what I've done under, since, under my administration here. Just off the top, from county, from grants, private donations in my other county, uh, housing, I brought in $9,162,000. So I meant, you know what I mean? I feel like I've done my job as the sheriff to bring everything. We would not have our cert, we would not have several things we have today if I hadn't been aggressive. It's not just me, it's my staff. You know, I've got $1.6 million on grants waiting. I probably won't get that. I'll probably look in about 1.2. So that'll put me up there, you know, at about $10.7 million. I think I've done a great job.
You left off...
But it's not only just me, it's all the other things I'm asking for also.
You left off the jail revenue too.
No, that, that's included in this, yes.
Well, I'm for it.
If, if it comes out of SB 22, I'm okay with it.
It's not, it's not costing our taxpayers.
That's right.
And the funding is there. You generated that funding and so I'm, I'm in favor of moving it with the sheriff's recommendation.
Senate Bill...
Our auditor wants to weigh in here.
But to understand, Senate Bill 22 money comes from the state.
Yes.
But it is taxpayer money.
Well...
It's just spread at a much higher rate.
It is, but it's not going to have a direct impact on our taxpayers.
Let, let me set the stage on SB 22 money. Two years ago, when the SB 22 was still, before the legislature hadn't been decided and we were in the budget process, trying to decide what to do, and the sheriff was asking for a 20% raise to retain and recruit and retain deputies.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we studied that and it was a very acute need at that time. And the SB 22 money was promised to be used for the salary and benefits for those deputies. It was not a stipend. They didn't get their money as a stipend. They got a 20% increase. Uh, and that comes right out of the county budget and that's paid for with taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
Um, when the SB 22 funds came in the second year, same thing. Uh, we use the SB 22 money to offset the expenses for having increased these, uh, officers' salaries. Uh, and without any, any forewarning, uh, this year, he wants to spend the SB 22 money, which is $500,000, from the state, give it to the sheriff's office. I understand that. Uh, but we didn't have any forewarning that all of a sudden you were going to pull the SB 22 money from underwriting the salaries for these officers. And that's, that's the net effect of what's going on here. So if county has to pick up that $500,000, that is definitely going to be Kirk County taxpayer dollars paying the raise that you said that you would use your SB 22 funds for.
No, sir, I'm not asking for 500,000. I'm asking for 283. And I'm asking for that to be replaced by the out-of-county housing is what I'm asking, which is also not taxpayer money.
There's no greater crucible than what you've gone through.
We won't even go there right now. That's not part of this.
I know. But it's still a raise. And, uh, the state of Texas has watched you on TV and has watched you lead. I get it. And his third money?
Yes, sir.
Been our best voice out there through all of this.
Either way, I don't disagree with what you're saying. And, and the sheriff and I have had this conversation, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. But he can take it through the jail money and it can still be routed around through that either way. And so, and, and we knew at some point, SB 22 could go away at some point, right? And if it does, we're going to be picking up that tab for those people in that jail regardless.
Well, or they'd lose it.
Or they lose it. And in this, in this instance, in this instance, if it goes away, he loses...
It's a stipend only.
It's a stipend.
But, but the jail money is not KCSO money. It's still county money.
Correct, sir.
The county passed, passed the bond issue, pays, pays the notes, bondage, pays the bonds. Uh, that revenue is Kirk County revenue.
Yes, sir. What if I didn't house any prisoners?
It was in general fund.
That's general fund money?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. But that's why I didn't recommend the, uh, your salary increase. I didn't recommend the new administration. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't recommend it.
Well, what if I didn't house any, Judge? Out of county.
Well, I guess you can do whatever you want to do.
Yes, sir.
But I'm grateful that you do. Because it does generate.
What's that?
I'm grateful that you do because it does generate.
You have taken this sheriff's office to a different level.
Absolutely.
And so many things that you can hardly measure. And, um, I'm good with it.
We haven't voted on any of this.
Well, except that if it comes out of SB 22, then it, it's kind of separate. So, I mean, again, I'm, I'm okay with it coming out of SB 22.
My department's going to vote on it.
I, I guess I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's going to come out of a different fund. It's not coming out when we total this all up. It still wouldn't be in there.
What are you saying?
Everything else that we approve on here is going to come out of the county budget. Taxpayer paid, but obviously SB 22 funds do not.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. Do we have a separate decision that we allocate?
These are special requests.
I know. But most of the special requests come out of county taxpayer dollars. This, he's talking about SB 22 dollars, which is separate.
The same dollars are being spent.
Well, what I'm just trying to find out, do we need, do we, do we need a motion here on anything? I mean, because we haven't done that on any, and, and I've been in, in agreement with you on every recommendation you made up to this point. But I, I don't on this one. And so how do we need to handle that?
So my question is...
I'm sorry?
Um, another way of looking at this is that he's got two special requests. Because he's got his special request and then another special request for the people that are currently being paid out of Senate Bill 22 will need to move to Fund 10. And so there, it's, it's kind of like, we, we've got half of the requests on there and we need another request on there too. Because whatever is currently being paid in Senate Bill 22, those employees will promise that money back two years ago. And so those people will need to continue to be paid to a point where it wasn't a stipend. And so they will be increasing this sheriff's or the jail budget and fund the 10. And now what was your question?
Do we need motion?
Well, yeah, do we need some kind of a motion to, to, to that effect?
I, I would think, um, we will need to know, we will need direction from you as a court on the way to move forward. Because of the budget, we've pretty much gone as far as we can go without having direction from the entire court.
But right now, you don't know how many people up here are for or against.
Correct.
Moving this, right?
And I guess it has to be clarified that the sheriff's office gives 500,000 of SB 22 funds and you can allocate that as stipends to kind of... kind of however you see fit, is my understanding.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So the only caveat is, if, if you take some of those SB twenty-two funds, or for that matter, for any new position, you know, then everybody's stipend is going to go down a little bit because your limit is five-hundred thousand.
What about the other stipends here?
It has nothing to do with stipends. We did new, uh, uh, job descriptions and raised that money, so if that money goes, the guys still make that money.
Okay.
That's what we did to get to where we're at today.
And also, and for the sheriff's office, he still has to have your approval in order to spend, in order to, he is going to spend.
Correct.
He does make recommendations to you, but he doesn't.
Okay.
That is different between me and the constables and the prosecutors.
Right.
Okay. Do we need a separate motion, or?
I'll make a motion that we honor the sheriff's request on his salary.
On the, on the sheriff's salary?
Uh, it'd be all five requests.
Twenty-five percent increase?
Out of SB twenty-two.
The SB twenty-two funds, as he's designated them, would be twenty-five percent increase in the sheriff's salary. It would be a, and that's a thirty-two dollar, a little over thirty-two thousand dollar raise. And then for the new administration, SOD, SOD stands for what?
Special Operations Division.
Okay. Corporal to sergeant is ninety-five hundred dollars. The sergeant to lieutenant is seventy-five hundred dollars, and the lieutenant to captain is seventy-three hundred dollars. And that's what makes up the two-eighty-three, is that right, Sheriff?
Uh, then, no, a new part-time de- deputy in our civil process, also in-car computers, which is going to be a mandatory thing this year, and a jail scanner for the jail. So there's five, that's the five things I'm asking. It comprises the two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars that I'd like to use the Senate Bill money that is allowable to use.
But they're not on the agenda today.
Those are the other things.
The special request that was a new, in fact, new, that's just a special, that's what matters.
That's the part-time deputy.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And so, Tanya, you're saying what we need to do then too is get an amendment to the, to the fund ten for the general fund, for the debt, for the jail portion.
And in the position schedule, so we all would just be moving the people that are currently being paid.
Okay.
... provided at trial, as well as reviewing mental health evaluations that had been performed at that time, and I was asked to provide an analysis of the essentially scientific merits of the risk assessment information that was presented at trial. So I reviewed all that information and wrote a declaration summarizing my concerns about the scientific merits of the testimony and evidence that was provided, and provided that to your agency, and was later informed that this hearing was going to happen, and that I was asked to come and testify about that same information. Your Honor, may I approach again?
Yes.
So Dr. Edens, I've now handed you applicant's exhibit one-twenty-three. Can you tell me what this document is?
Uh, this is the various sources of information that your agency provided to me in relation to, first, the preparation of my affidavit that I submitted to you, and then the latter part of this describing post-conviction materials is information that I was provided and reviewed since the time that my affidavit was completed, which I reviewed in preparation for this testimony today.
Your Honor, we've moved to admit applicant's exhibit one-twenty-three. No objections, Your Honor?
It's admitted.
Okay, so, Dr. Edens, before we get into the specifics of your opinions about Dr. Randall's testimony, I want to lay some groundwork for understanding those opinions, okay?
Sure.
Are there ethical standards that guide the work of mental health professionals?
Yes.
Are you familiar with those ethical standards, as they apply to forensic psychiatrists?
Uh, yes.
What, what are those guidelines?
Uh, the American Academy of Psychiatry and Law has an ethics committee and a, a set of ethical guidelines that define sort of the parameters of what's appropriate professional conduct for forensic psychologists, and that's widely available on their website.
Uh, and how long have those guidelines been in place for?
I believe those came out, I just looked at this earlier, but no, I believe it's two thousand and six. It could be two thousand and five, actually.
So two thousand and five or six?
Yes.
Why is it important for mental health professionals to adhere to ethical guidelines in their practice?
Well, they provide the guardrails essentially for what is considered to be appropriate professional conduct in situations where there may be some ambiguity about what is the right thing to do, and they provide recourse to individuals who feel that they have been mistreated by professionals in an area, so that they can document that somebody's behavior was out of bounds, and which can then be used to do things like censure individuals if they're found that have engaged in inappropriate conduct, or, you know, pull somebody's license, or things of that nature.
Do ethical guidelines promote scientific accuracy and truthfulness in the diagnostic process?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, every ethics code I've ever looked at in relation to, you know, mental health issues talks about the importance of, you know, objectivity and reliability and scientific validity, and they need to base opinions on, you know, sound, scientific, and professional, you know, information.
Is part of the purpose of the ethical guidelines to ensure that accurate diagnostic processes, or information about diagnostic processes are being accurately conveyed to jurors?
Sure.
Objection, leading.
Sustained.
Uh, is there anything about the ethical guidelines that informs how?
Out of Senate Bill twenty-two money, assistant district attorney investigator is fifty-one-fifty increase in salary out of SB twenty-two. The legal assistant is eighty-seven-sixty-three increase in salary out of forfeiture, and the legal assistant is ninety-two-oh-six increase out of forfeiture. That's a total increase of thirty thousand, eight-ninety-seven out of, if you will, other means than fund eighty-four for one-ninety-eight. Thank you.
Well, no, no, the one-ninety-eights is going to possibly come out of SB twenty-two.
Only the attorneys.
Right. Okay, so.
Yeah, the first two is Senate Bill twenty-two, and the other two are forfeiture.
Gotcha.
Other means in our actual fund.
Gotcha.
Just a little clarity.
Good. And also to clarify, the district clerk has eight recommended, recommended three-thousand-dollar stipends for a total of twenty-four thousand dollars. That comes out of the fund that she controls. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
I, I oppose that.
Unanimous? Let's move on to new positions. We have already approved the KCSO SB twenty-two Fund seventy-six new position, part-time civil deputy. There are special circumstances with him. He's, he's been volunteering or something?
Yes, sir, for probably coming on two years. He, he's been very good to us, and as I tell you, my, my civil process deputies are kind of on their way out. They're probably like two years or less. He's willing to go over there and kind of help, because that's a very complicated position that a lot of people don't want to do. So he's going to kind of learn it and kind of help train somebody in the future. He's been a big, huge asset to the sheriff's office.
And that's already been approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we're talking about on new positions, let's go to animal control first, and that is a new position for a full-time kennel tech and eliminating an animal control officer.
And it's a savings to the county, at least this year.
Yes, this year. So I'll move to approve that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roughly two-thousand-dollar savings, just to be clear to the public.
Those in favor, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Unanimous? The elections, a new position. That's, it's the clerk's office. There's two positions there, one for the elections and one for.
This one I don't fully understand, so somebody.
I can't imagine why we need to do this.
Oh, this, and we haven't gotten to this point yet, so we're not, I'm not going to ask this to be approved right now. This is the elections administrator. Just as an aside, there's been discussion about moving the elections out of the county clerk's office into its own election administr- administration, just like most counties have. And if we did that.
We lost the dome.
Huh? My mistake.
It's back where it belongs statutorily. Why, why do we need to create something?
It's not on, it's not on this recommendation here. Shouldn't, this shouldn't be on here. This court hasn't made the decision.
So we need to scratch that item?
Scratch that discussion.
Time to be.
Okay.
I'm against it, but.
Do you have somebody who wants to speak to that?
Well, if it's not on the item for approval, we don't need to.
If we're passing on it, or.
Well, what is on the agenda? If you look at, it says transfer.
Yes.
No, we're, I don't think we're there yet on that. We'll have to come back on that. And then we have a, we're going to have to get, Nadine, we're going to have to get clarification on how, how to handle the county clerk on that.
Okay.
Okay. Then we've got the new position at KCSO, which was not addressed earlier, if I understand correctly.
Which, which position is that?
New patrol.
It does say the cost, the salary is a sixty-six thousand dollar salary for a new patrol deputy.
Yes, sir, any kind varies what certificate he has.
Yes.
But, yeah, that's, that's starting.
We're shorthanded, aren't we?
Yes.
Is there a certain shift that you're trying to fill?
Uh, yeah, we'll probably, we're going to have executive discussion on that here in a little bit. I don't really want to talk about manpower.
Okay.
Okay.
Where the, I guess we need to hold off on this.
No, shut up.
Come back to this if we're going to discuss it in an executive session.
Are we discussing this in executive session?
I don't know. I, I'm not clear.
We're going to have some conversation in executive session about personnel and security, and, and I don't have any action items after that.
Correct.
On the agenda, but I'd like to be able to visit with you guys.
But.
If, if the sheriff wants this position, then we need to have a motion in the second to go ahead and adopt it here as a new position on this, this schedule.
I move for approval.
All second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
So we're talking about the what? We'll talk about the why later for this position.
If we recall this item after executive session, if we'd like to.
And vote.
Y'all want to vote now or not?
But are we, we are, to be clear, we're talking about the new patrol deputy, the part-time civil deputy, and the?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, those are separate. Well, I got, I see that, it's the box below.
The one that has.
So we're just going to do the one position at a time?
Ten dash five-sixty, see it?
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we're, we're dealing with right now. The SB twenty-two, the one there in the middle, has already been dealt with.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to wait to vote after we have the executive session. I want to hear the what and the why.
Thank you.
We can come out in the executive session and deal with it.
And what about the jailer?
We can talk about that now. Yeah, I've, I'm requesting another jailer. I have three shifts with eight, one shift with nine. I'm trying to get everybody up to nine to be able to properly take care of all the inmates, especially the out-of-county inmates.
Increase in population, Sheriff?
Uh, yes, primarily out-of-county. Our in-county is actually lower. Today, we're two-hundred-and-twenty-two, out-of-county eighty-two.
That's okay, because out-of-county pays more?
Yes, sir. Out of the two, out of the two-hundred-and-twenty-two, eighty-two of those are out-of-county.
You started people as jailers and.
Yes, and actually, we put about twelve through today. I actually got one at the academy and two more going, so I'm kind of creating my own deputies, which has really worked great, although you lose about a year when they go to the academy and come out, but you know, it's well worth it. These guys are going to stay around here hopefully for a long time.
Remind me, what's the, kind of the maximum?
Ratio.
Population you can have in the jail at any time?
Oh, oh, I, I, three-twenty-eight's what it's built for, but you, you don't want to run at that full capacity, obviously.
So what's your kind of limit?
Staff-wise, I can go about two-fifty with what I have today. Anything over that, you'd have to add another jailer per shift.
And when you do that, then you have to increase medical too, though.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. But we are increasing it this year. It's already been approved, but we're going to be good for a little while. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're going to approve the jailer?
I'll make a motion to approve the jailer.
New position.
For corrections, officer.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand.
Thanks, sir.
Four oh, one. Okay. I believe the next item on the agenda is one-point-eleven, which is the, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to ratify contract with waterway engineering for professional services for floodplain engineering on-call services. We know what it is, Charlie.
The world needs to know what it is, sir.
I think you're right.
This is important. How did we get here? Professional requirements, procurement, services, even in an emergency, we still follow certain protocol. One of the things that we have to do when we hire someone for professional services is it's absolutely against the law to do it based on price. You don't hunt around looking for a good engineer based on how much they charge. You're going to get bad results on that. But you do it based on qualifications. Then after you select someone based on qualifications, then you can negotiate a price, and if you can't reach a deal with one guy, then you can go to the next most qualified, okay? So in the case of my recommendation to hire Michael Pantel, P.E., with waterway engineering, he was clearly brought to us in a time of dire need by God. On July fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Kirk County was deluged with potentially up to nineteen inches of water over a three-hour period that covered hundreds of square miles of mostly the south fork of the Guadalupe River and a portion of the north fork. It resulted in unprecedented heights, velocities, and worst of all, to this day, I, actually, I think we know to this day, but at the time I wrote this, unknown loss of life as the count climbs daily in search of, in search efforts. That's been reversed, so I got to correct that. There's three left. We know. It is the county engineer's understanding that Mr. Pantel, P.E., is an expert on the subject matter of hydraulic engineering. Of his own accord, began to create a hydraulic model of the entire Guadalupe River watershed from the headwaters in Kirk County to Canyon Lake, a stretch of river over one-hundred miles long with an elevation difference from Camp Mystic to Canyon Lake of over nine-hundred feet. It was brought to the attention of the county engineer on July ninth, twenty-twenty-five, by a local engineering firm who has been using Pantel's services in Kirk County because, according to the owner of said firm, Michael Wellborn, P.E., certified floodplain manager, Pantel is the best of the best. This is all that he does. That Pantel had built this model and was producing results that appeared to match the unbelievable damage and destruction. The county engineer contacted Pantel and evaluated the analysis and confirmed that indeed the results were strikingly similar to high-water marks observed in the field. The county engineer then vetted the model against a flood inundation map that had been created by the Harris County Flood District through a star request out of the Emergency Operations Center. The results were stunning, as the model matched the flood extents. The model immediately and accurately provided an interactive tool to go back in time and watch with one's own eyes the actual path and magnitude of the flash flood overlaid on aerial photography, thus clearly explaining what happened in the early morning dark hours of July fourth, twenty-twenty-five. The model, thus Pantel is uniquely qualified for the job, okay? Pantel is, in my opinion, he's a world hero. The county engineer ordered him to be hired on the spot. The contract has been signed. It's for a mere thirty thousand dollars, and, but it was signed under emergency conditions, and we need for the court to ratify.
I'll make a motion to ratify the contract with waterway engineering.
I'll second.
You've got a motion in the second. Ratify the contract with waterway engineering as presented. Ratify the contract with Waterway Engineering as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
If you could talk about where that comes from, whose budget, and is that currently budgeted, that thirty K?
No.
I'm just an engineer, so I don't know.
I need an answer, though.
The contract we've also included terms that Pena finds appropriate for reimbursement on the other end of this, and we'll be helpful.
So, you're gonna try to seek reimbursement, but the county could be on the hook for the thirty thousand?
Yeah.
If we don't get reimbursement?
If we did not get reimbursement, that is for it.
Okay.
But we've got professional services that will cover whatever means that we pay what now, or I'll be coming back to the budget adjustment.
Sure.
So that we can pay all these expenses.
Okay.
So, we did work with the contracting team, uh, well, I don't know if that's really what they're called, but with Pena Finance.
Yes.
And so, they reviewed the contract, they sent us the provisions to make sure everything's in here so that we have our best chance of being reimbursed.
We've burned through probably about half of that amount. The, the next half, even tomorrow night, he's gonna be present at the Ingram, Tom Moore High School.
Down hall.
Down hall meeting that we have at six thirty P.M. Anyway, I, I don't know when we're gonna exhaust those. We may need to come back, is what I'm saying. But we'll see.
I guess that, that's kinda where I was gonna ask you, Charlie. I mean, is there a need for this kinda engineering service next year or beyond, or...
I think that those kinda discussions are being had with another entity of Kerr County.
Okay.
I was, uh, in the initial meeting with, with him at your office, I believe, uh, Saturday four last, and he'd been up all night figuring this stuff.
On his own?
Not yet, on his own, not knowing if he'd be paid or not. I mean, it was pretty impressive and, you know, put his best foot forward.
Yeah.
I was impressed.
He did us a solid, and we need to, we need to pay him back.
Exactly.
Just to be clear, terms of contract, one, this instant only, or is this an engineering contract?
It's an hourly with a not-to-exceed of thirty thousand dollars. We're, we're about fifty percent on that right now.
Thank you.
Now, to be more specific about, we do have the money in professional services. Right?
Or will we come back to the...
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, and we're gonna adjourn into the executive session to discuss personnel matters.